Okay, I will call to order the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for November 19th, 2018, and then first ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And would like to ask our chaplain Reverend Patrick Womack to come forward, deliver the invocation force.
Good evening, sir, thank you. Let's pray. Gracious God, our Father in Heaven, we praise and exalt your name. And in this season of Thanksgiving, we certainly return thanks to you, to whom it is due, for from you all blessings flow. We ask your blessing on this meeting. Thank you for these, our commissioners, and we pray that you will bless each, and that in this time of transition, oh Lord, we pray that you will continue to grant to us leadership imbued with wisdom and knowledge to lead us well and wisely. Lord, grant them the ability to see both the trees and the forest, to be able to manage the details, but also to keep in view the big picture. For we know that you work all things together for the good of those that love you, and for that we thank you and give you praise. In your name, amen.
Amen. All right, I'd like to thank everybody for being here this evening. Next thing is our public comment session. We like to keep our public comments to around three minutes, but we can give or take some every now and then. We've got a couple people signed up, and after they get through speaking, if anyone else would like to speak, please feel free to come forward. First person is Earl Lanning. Mr. Lanning's here with us this evening.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Thank you for listening to me.
No problem. Make sure you speak into that, Mr. Lanning, because I know whatever you have to say is important.
Right here. My name is Earl Lanning, and I've been doing bronze sculptural work for about forty years. And I want to ask the commissioners permission to put a veterans monument down here with the rest of them. It will be a Revolutionary War. Militia man, the same soldiers that were on the Rutherford Expedition. I've always thought they should have a monument like that. And it will be eighty inches tall, and I'd like to put it down next to the flagpole. And it's not going to cost anybody anything. I'm doing the artwork and paying the whole bill myself. I know it'll get done like that. If you start fooling around with a bunch of politics, litigation, it might not get done before I die. Because I never know when the grim reaper's coming at eighty-six, you know? But I think I can have it ready by spring. And of course, if you people approve of me putting it down there, you'll have the final thing to look at the monument, you know, when it's finished, and you can approve it or disapprove it. But that's my objective here. I grew up hearing about the Rutherford Expedition with my grandfather, who was born in 1857, and I always wondered why somebody hadn't done something about this. But one day I was coming to the courthouse, and I said, "Well, you dang old fool, you're supposed to do it." So that's what I decided to do. And the thought came to me, what President Kennedy's statement made in his speech, "Think not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." Well, this is my lick right here. So that's it, fellas. If you've got any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
And Mr. Lanning, where is it that you said that you wanted it to be located?
Right down next to the flagpole. It'd be out of everybody's way there. And Joe Sam Queen suggested putting it there, where you'd see Plot Balsam in the background. And we'll probably put it up on a big, flat rock, or whatever you guys want to do, so you can build a field rock, a base for it, or anything you want to. Now, I'm not going to do the base, but I will do the monument. Now, it'll take me most of the winter to get this done, but it'll look just like that. And it'll be eighty inches tall.
Okay. Mr. Shale, have any questions, since he's offering to build something for the county at this point? Usually we don't do questions.
I think we have a Revolutionary War monument, do we? We don't have a Revolutionary War monument, do we?
No, you don't.
That's right. We got Civil War, Korean, Vietnam.
There's been a group of us, we got these monuments put up along the road, you know, telling where the trace was. But we do not have one. Something else I'd like to inject here, the Revolutionary War militia and Continental Line were their very first veterans. They were paid pensions after the war, and they're still recognized all over the country. There's a lot of monuments other places. You know, Boston's got the Minuteman up there, you know? And this is very much what that would be, you know? So I think we really should have one out there. They were boots on the ground, the first freedom fighters. And there's two thousand men came through here with Rutherford, and they camped right down here at Suffer Springs along the Redstone Creek. And it's right in the city limits of Waynesville. That's it, fellas. Make up your minds and let me know, okay?
Mr. Lanning, you did a demonstration when we had our 100 year celebration.
Yeah, I got all those crazy people down there shooting rifles and everything. We had a good time. But I've been in this field a long time. History is my thing. But I would really like to do this, so.
Okay.
Whatever you fellas think about it. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lanning. We'll need to put it on a regular agenda to make any official decision about it. Okay, next is Andrew Ferguson.
Good evening, commissioners, how you doing? I just wanted to take a quick second. I don't have any concerns or anything. I just wanted to tell Commissioner Upton and Commissioner Sorrels, it's my understanding that this will be the last meeting for both of you, and I just wanted to tell you guys how appreciative I am of what you've done. Bill, I think it goes without saying, a lifetime of service that you've given back to Haywood County, and we're all, you know, very appreciative of what you've done, and I'd like to, you know, extend that you enjoy retirement, because you deserve it. And Mike, if in fact this is the last commissioners meeting, I want to extend to you the same thank you and level of appreciation that I have for what you guys do. Being a commissioner, I like to tell people it's like being a lineman. You know, you get none of the credit and all the blame, so it's not easy what you guys do, and I know you guys do it for the right reasons, and you know, with politics aside for the most part, and I really appreciate that from all of you, and I wish you guys the best.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. We appreciate those comments. Okay, would anyone else like to speak at public comment? If not, I'll move to constituent concerns, and first I'll ask the commissioners, do you have any constituent concerns?
Well, I don't have any constituent concerns, but I'd like to take just a few minutes and express gratitude, first, for Bill Upton, for your service to Haywood County as, you know, longtime principal, longtime superintendent, and longtime commissioner. Really enjoyed having the opportunity to work with you, and getting to know you, and watching especially the people around you that you oversaw in the school system and all, and how much respect that they had for you. And I want to thank you for that. And I want to thank the citizens in Haywood County who have supported me in my public service endeavors. You know, I first ran for school board in 2004, and was elected, and elected again in 2008, and had a good run on the school board, served with a great board, made a lot of progress, had a goal of leaving the school system in better shape than when I come in. I think I accomplished that. I thank you for the support that I've had as a commissioner. I ran in 2010 and was elected again in 2014. We made a lot of progress. The board, starting, you know, Mark Swanger was on it to start with, and these gentlemen here, and then Brandon come on the last couple of years, and, you know, I think when you look at where we were and where we are now, you know, there's been tremendous progress in the county. And I feel very comfortable in saying that I left the county in better shape than when I come in. And in saying that, the staff, I want to thank the people who worked for our county government, from the maintenance people, DSS, Sheriff's Department, EMS, in this courthouse, for the passion that they have for Haywood County. You know, it's a great place to live. It's always been a great place to live, and you all make it better for our citizens. And I want to move on up to the inner staff that we deal with, administrative staff. We tend to have a little bit more one-on-one with them, just simple reason, because that's who we deal with. You all keep us in the know, you keep us the information that we need, and, you know, it's been greatly appreciated. I think you all do a wonderful job, and Haywood County's better for that. Also had opportunities to serve with now four county managers. Come in Marty Stamey was here, a great person, great friend, and worked hard for the county. Ira Dove, I don't know whether Ira's still here or not. I really appreciate, Ira was the first person that called me Wednesday after the election. So I appreciate that, Ira. And then, of course, had an opportunity to work with Mr. Bashburn. He brought a different aspect to what we were used to, I think. He was long-term county manager, kind of even-kill, knew how to handle everything. We appreciate that. And Bryant, very appreciative, or glad you're here. I was very appreciative that I was involved in bringing you here. So I appreciate that very much. And then I want to come back to the board here and tell you guys that it's been a wonderful experience for me. I've enjoyed the friendship, I've enjoyed the camaraderie, and, you know, we've accomplished a lot, and I wish you all well. And as soon as we get through with this little bit of business, I'll be on my way. So I appreciate everything.
Thank you, Mike. I got a few words later, but we'll move through.
You go to Bill, and I'll come up.
Okay, Bill?
Okay. I really hated to come up here today. Because it's kind of like losing your family. I'm talking about this group of people that I've worked with. Mike was my boss when I was superintendent, about a year there, so I've known him since then. Kevin, we've worked together for the last twelve years, and we appreciate all the insight that you've given to the board. You know, experience teaches a lot of things, if you listen. Kurt, I've known you since you were thirteen years old, so we've been together a long time. And, you know, your mom worked in the school system, your dad was one of my bosses on school board. Brandon, you were one of my students, Pisgah High School. Your mother drove a bus for me. Your brother graduated my son, so I've known everybody for a long time. So I guess my point is, it's like leaving your family. We care about each other, we love each other, you know? I said it, we love each other. We care about our county, the citizens of our county. We always want to do what's best for our county. We don't worry about, "You're Republican, you're Republican, you're Democrat." We've never worried about that. So I want to see that continue. I want to see the school system remain number one. That's the only time you'll hear me come up and fuss, if I don't think the school system is getting what they need. And maybe mountain projects, perhaps, if you're not getting what you need. It's just been an enjoyable time for me. One thing you have to be as commissioner, you have to be a good listener, and we have been. Because you can't respond to everything that is said to you. You can't take it personally. If you did, you'd go crazy. We've had great chairmen through the years. I guess Larry Ammons, Mark Swanger, Kirk Cipratic, you know, all been great chairmans, and they let all of us participate. And we've been an open government. If you're not sure what's said tonight, you can watch it again to make sure that you heard it right. So we don't hide anything. I used to think, you know, commissioners have power. I had more power as a high school principal than any job I've ever had. I was judge, jury, and executioner. Right? Tommy, Mr. Pliss back there? So I've never had that kind of power, you know? It really couldn't be challenged. But as commissioners, if you don't have two other people agreeing with you, forget it. And, you know, people wonder, you know, the board's changing. One thing nobody said, we have a three-two vote board now. Mr. Pliss? Three Pisgah students. Am I right? Have I missed it? Tommy, Pliss? So, you know, it's all kind of ways to look at things, but... And I'm hoping you Pisgah boys to kind of stick together. I'll get you together sometime and talk with you. Again, thanks to the citizens of Haywood County for your support of me as an elementary principal, high school principal, high school assistant principal, superintendent. And one reason I ran for board is I wanted to give back to the county. And Mike, you're correct. When I started, our facilities were terrible, county facilities. We've improved that, so we have made progress, and I feel like that progress will continue. So again, thank you to the citizens, thank you to this board. Anyone on this board could be chairman, but we select the person we think can best lead us, and that's what we've done. So again, thank you. And my wife, she's not here, but she has plans for me. I might want to, I might have to run from board again to get out of the house. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I believe the sheriff has a few words he wants to say about both Bill and Mike as well.
Bill, would you come around here, sir? And Michael, would you come around here as well? I've been the sheriff nearly six years, and these two men, along with the rest of our commissioners, has made our sheriff's office a whole lot better. And I really, really appreciate the things that you men have done to help us be able to help keep the people in our county safe. And we just wanted to give you this, as just a token of our appreciation to the things that you guys have done for us and for our employees, who are so vitally important to our county. And it goes like this, in appreciation to Commissioner Bill Upton for his dedication, commitment, and support of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office in helping to make our communities and county a safer place to live. Bill, thank you so much. And Michael says the same thing. I want to read this, though. "In appreciation to Commissioner Michael Sorrels for his dedication, commitment, and support of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office in helping to make our communities and county a safer place to live." Thank you both very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, I guess while we're on that, anybody else want to say anything regarding Bill or Mike? I'm going to say something in a minute. You go ahead, Kevin.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to thank Michael and Bill also. You know, I'm probably just going to repeat what I said before, but I just want to let the public know where this board has taken us to now. Our tax rate is probably in the top, the thirtieth, I think we're either thirty or less lowest tax rate. So we have one of the lowest tax rates in the state. Our fund balance is around thirty-two percent. It's never been that high, but that's the state average, and that's where we need to be, and these guys have gotten us there. And you've got to remember, we did this through the Great Recession. This has been since 2010, okay? Our debt is on a downward trajectory. Everybody always throws out these numbers about the debt, you know, you've got all this debt. Well, we could borrow five hundred and eighty-five million dollars by, I think, by our tax rate, our taxing ability in this county. That's what the state would let us borrow, five hundred and eighty-five million dollars, and we're below fifty, I'm pretty sure.
Forty-six.
Forty-six, yeah. And that's going down. It's less than it was when I took office in 2008, I know that. We fund our schools, we're in the top twenty-five percent in the state. I'm not sure where we were exactly this year, y'all might know about that. Bill, I'm sure Bill does. So, but that's where, that's the benchmark that this next board has to work with. That's where we're at right now. And I just think, and that's from Michael and Bill and all of our leadership, but they, you know, when you're a commissioner, you're twenty percent. That's what you are, you're twenty percent. Like Bill says, you think you've got all this power, it's just twenty percent, and you've got to get forty more if you want to do something that's good for the citizens. So, but I appreciate Bill. Anytime we had a question about education, he's been on both sides, and it's so valuable to know when we're looking at information and different things, to have his background. I told him we'd probably be calling him, because, you know, if I want to know the other side of it, because he's done both sides, and that's such a valuable piece of experience. And I just, and I appreciate Bill. He's always been, and both of them have always been even-kill and never argumentative or anything like that. I would not want to serve on a board where we have to have an argument all the time. And we generally, if we have a difference of opinion, we have a difference of opinions with our wives, you know, but we've got to live with them. And I think that's kind of how we've operated. We have to live with everyone. And so if we have a disagreement, you know, then we fight for another day. But we don't carry a grudge with us all the time, so. And I think that's what sometimes the public wants you to see you up here, you know, duking it out, if you will, and we're just not going to do that. We're going to make sure we do what's best for the county, and that's what these guys have done, and that's what I'm going to miss. And hopefully that will continue into the future, that we work together to get the good things done for the county. And Michael's been such a good friend. I've known him, I've known his wife, she worked at Wachovia when I first came to Waynesville in the mid-eighties, when I first started my business in Waynesville in the mid-eighties. But, and I've known Michael since then, and just, you know, I guess we've kind of grown up and everything, so when Michael ran for school board, I've always been a supporter of Mike, and I appreciate him, and he's always been a supporter of mine, and we, you know, it doesn't, party doesn't come into play, because we know, I know Mike's a good person, so's Bill and everything, and they've got the best, what's best for the county in mind. So I'm really going to miss both of you. And Michael, if he's involved with an issue, he knows the details. If, you know, when you're a commissioner, you have different boards that you serve on, and so we all rely on making sure that each person understands the issue on their board that they bring to this board. And Michael can always describe it. He's always, he knows, he's got just really good insight, and he knows kind of how we all think, and so he's always been really good for that. But I'm going to miss you guys, and I wish you all the best, as, you know, as Bill, you know, whatever your wife wants you to be doing.
That's what I'll be doing.
Yeah. And Michael's, I know she's always got stuff for him to do, whether he's a commissioner or not, so he'll have a little bit more time, I think, to take care of those. But I really appreciate you guys, and I appreciate your service.
Brandon?
Yeah, I've got a few words. Just sitting here thinking about serving with these guys and getting to know them. I didn't know Michael, he said that earlier. I didn't know him, I knew who he was, but I didn't know him that well, and I've got to know him these last two years pretty well. Spent a lot of time with him, feel like they're, well, we are family, because we spend so much time together. And I appreciate both you guys. Bill, he's probably grabbed a paddle a few times on myself, and I did hear him say he might come back up here and speak occasionally, and you've got to remember, you only got three minutes. We're going to cut you off after they see that red light come on. No, Bill's, I feel like he partially raised me because he was my principal, and I have learned a lot from him. I've even learned a lot since I've been on this board. I wrote in the book, or you can read it later, but Bill is full of a lot of knowledge and wisdom, and we did lean on him quite a bit, especially when it come to the school side of things, along with Michael. And, you know, Michael served on the school board too. But to tell a story on Michael, I remember when I was thinking about running for commissioner, and I called Michael up, because I know he owns a small business like I do myself, and I said, "Michael, you know, serving on this board, will it hurt your business any?" He said, "Nah, yeah, it probably will." We do get a lot of visits, because we are so accessible to the public, and that's okay. You know, that's one of the reasons I run, because I want to be a voice for the people and listen to them. So going back, I can't say no more than what these guys have already said. They've said it well, and I don't need to repeat it. My wife gets on me a lot. She'll text me something, and she sends a paragraph to a book-sized text, and I'm a three-word guy. So she says, "Are you mad or something? Why don't you respond no better than that?" But that's just who I am. I don't have a whole lot to say, especially when it's already been said. But thank you guys for serving, thank you for your friendship. You will be missed, and, you know, you guys, like I've told both of you before, you're just a phone call away, and we know that. So thank you for your service.
I will say that we did have a reception for both Bill and Mike prior to this, and we gave them both something that we felt appropriate for both of them. We are going to miss them tremendously. They are both, you know, great assets to this board and have been great assets to the county. And some people probably don't realize the contributions that both of them have made. And I know I'm going to miss them, especially when it does come down to the school board and education. We've had that experience on our board for a long time, for twelve years, twelve and eight years, and that's going to be missed. The friendship is going to be missed. I know you guys know that we, sometimes we have a pretty good time up here. We try to be very serious about the county's business, we try to make the best decisions for the county. And one of the things about all the commissioners I've served with is the fact that they truly, in their heart, have the best interest of the county, in their best interest. And Mike and Bill both, if you are a citizen of Haywood County, you've had somebody that's batting for you all the time, that has your back, because both of them have. And I've seen it time after time at these meetings, in the open session and in closed session, looking out for what is best for the entire county. And, you know, sometimes that's not easy. County doesn't agree all the way across the board, and you have tough decisions up here up here. But I've never seen them not think through an important decision, or even a trivial decision, about what is best. And I really appreciate that, and I will miss it. I'll miss seeing both of you as often as we get to see each other. I mean, some people don't realize, it's not just two times a month, we have to see each other at programs and benefits. We have to see each other at programs and benefits and parades. I'm going to miss the parade. I really enjoy riding the parade with the commissioners, and we have a good time. And we don't talk about county business, but we just have a good time together. That kind of camaraderie helps you make the right decision. It also helps you be able to have differing opinions about things, and we certainly have. And it's not a board that agrees on everything all the time, but we know how to talk it out and remain civil with each other. And Bill, I'm going to miss you tremendously. I'm sure I'll see you at the Fitness Center. And Mike, I'll miss you as well, but I know I'll interact with you also. And I'd just like, if everybody would just stand and give him another hand before we go on with the meeting. All right, we'll move forward with the work we have to get done this evening. Next is administrative agency reports. SandTech Environmental Update at White Oak Landfill. Got our SandTech Executive Vice President of Marketing, Cheryl Dunson, with us here this morning. I believe you have a, what do you call these things? Forgot.
PowerPoint.
PowerPoint, yeah. PowerPoint, gosh.
We assumed management responsibilities of the landfill in 2011. It's been our practice to come at least once a year and present to the Board of Commissioners on our progress and what has been happening at the landfill. So, that's what I'm here to do tonight with a very brief PowerPoint presentation, and I'd be more than happy to address any questions or concerns that you have. Just stop me, or we can wait till the end, whatever works best for the commission. The first thing I'd like to talk about is our annual landfill waste volumes. This is for the fiscal year July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018. Our total in-county annual waste volume was 66,637.78 tons, and our total out-of-county waste volume was 94,247.41 tons, for a total combined annual volume of 160,855.19 tons. Again, this amount is tied to our permit with the state of North Carolina, and our contract is tied to that permit. Approximately 460 tons of the 160,855 tons came across the scale, but it didn't go into the landfill. It was actually brush that was recycled on-site, so it did not go into the landfill. But those are the total amount of tons that came into the facility during that fiscal year. Another aspect of our contract is the annual host fee that we return back to the county on every ton of waste that crosses the scale. And as you can see, I've broken it down by quarter. The first quarter, $25,327.95. The second quarter, $25,431.13. Third quarter, $26,490.10. And then finally, the fourth quarter, $23,247.45, excuse me, for a total amount of $104,996.63. Since the inception of our contract, we have actually returned back to Haywood County Let's talk a little bit about the life of the landfill. Our total projected permitted airspace for phases one through seven is 9.3 million cubic yards of airspace. Our remaining projected permitted airspace is a little over 7.2 million cubic yards of airspace for a cumulative remaining life expectancy of 33.6 years. What I'd like to remind the commission is that since the inception of the contract, we have actually increased the total life expectancy by more than 10 years above the 30-year airspace guarantee to Haywood County for a total of 40.2 years. And those things were achievable through good compaction at the landfill. As the landfill ages, our density is getting better through good engineering practices and working with the state to modify the slopes and gain airspace. But total efficiencies of the landfill are good, and we're gaining those efficiencies every year. So, I think it's a testament to the partnership that we continue to work together to preserve and be good stewards of the life of the landfill. A little bit about the recent construction at the landfill, which is Phase Four. We actually started the construction in June, June 22nd of this year. The cell is about 4.4 acres, and it's going to provide us with about 500,000 cubic yards of airspace for an estimated life of two years and three months based on our current volume. We had a meeting earlier with staff, and we were asked, "Well, how much did that cost?" And it came to about $500,000 an acre to construct that airspace from start to finish. And I've got some pictures here of the actual construction event. Here, you can see we're constructing the subgrade in preparation for the clay liner, which is the first layer of impermeable, the impermeable barrier that we have in place. It's a 1x10 to the minus 5 centimeters per second, which is just a fancy term of how long will it take one drop of water to penetrate through that clay liner. On top of the clay liner, we come on top with a high-density polyethylene synthetic liner. Here, you can see that has been installed. And then on top of that, we come across with protective cover to facilitate the flow of leachate or garbage juice into the drains so that, you know, we're constantly draining this big bathtub, I guess you could say, of any rainwater that falls through the garbage onto the bottom of the liner. Here, you can see the protective cover and the leachate collection pipes. And then, as we do at all of the facilities that we construct, we do construct berm so that any garbage that falls through, excuse me, any rainwater that falls through garbage on one side of the berm is collected as leachate, and then the other side of the berm is treated as stormwater. Again, just good management practices. We are anticipated to get approval from the state of North Carolina to move into the new cell in January, so we do have to get approval before we can just move in. But we've got plenty of airspace right now, and we're working with the regulators to get that approval put in place. I do have some staff members with me today. I have Matt Dillard is our Vice President, EVP of Operations. John Preston is our onsite landfill superintendent. Ron Vale is our EVP of Engineering, and then Ben Johnston is with us tonight. He's our new VP of Business Development. So, we are available to answer any questions or concerns that you may have. But again, just wanted to come and give you an overview of what's going on at the landfill and let you know about some of the efficiencies and progress that we are making on your behalf.
Commissioners, Mike, Brandon, I know you guys serve on that board, right? Do you serve on that board?
You know, I've been on Solid Waste Committee the entire time that I've been a commissioner, and also was, actually wasn't involved when the initial contract was, I kind of inherited it when I walked in the door. But I took great interest in this particular, or solid waste, because it's a huge expense for the county. And I've been in most all the quarterly meetings and yearly meetings and visited the landfill and been to Cleveland, to the home office and all. But it's, you know, when I come in, this county, we were in really pretty bad shape in our landfill. We were hoping we had 25, maybe 30 years left. We had some serious issues out there. And once they took over and started management, you could see the improvement almost daily. And, you know, obviously now, you know, they've been at it for quite some time, and we've got more life expectancy on that landfill than we anticipated. So, overall, also, we've made, you know, financial monies back to the county. And I want to point out that sale, they spent about $2.5 million developing that sale. Well, the last one, Haywood County had to pay to develop that sale. So, there's a $2.5 million savings that we have already there, and that's not including the closure monies and your post-closure monies and stuff that was expected that you, you know, would have over the life of the landfill. So, right now, this thing's working. All the numbers point that way, and, you know, I appreciate the work that you all do out there. Cheryl's getting ready to retire. So, you know, it's been enjoyable knowing you and...
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you.
You've answered every question that's ever needed, and I encourage the new guys coming on to dig deep into this thing so you understand it, because a lot of people out there in the public don't understand it. And, but, you know, I've been, I can say that I've really tried to ride herd on this thing and watch it, and appreciate you guys, and got to know John pretty well out there. He's, I don't know how much longer he's going to be out there, but good job. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to add to what Michael said, when I was elected as commissioner, I had an interest as well, and I asked to be part of the, or representative, commissioner representative as well with Michael, because I had a lot of questions, you know? I wanted to make sure that my kids would have somewhere to put their trash one day. And I have learned a lot. I know that, looking back, two years ago, when I was first elected, you know, we were told even at that point, we had gained a few years. I know the question I get asked a lot out in the community and in the public is, when you're saying you've got 30 years and we're six years into it, how can we still have 33 years at this point? And we asked that question earlier today. Ma'am Michael had a meeting with SandTech, and they answered that by telling us that they're a good engineer they have back there. They've engineered this to come a long way in the way they're compacting. And I know that, we actually went back into cell number three as well, and were able to put, or two, excuse me, and put some more trash in there. But we're doing things better, as Michael pointed out earlier, which has helped a whole lot. So, we're actually gaining years, as she just reported. So, I think they're doing a good job. And the big thing that I've learned as well is the money that it has saved the county. You know, I'm big on saving money, and if we'd had this thing ourselves, the county would have had to pay for all this work that's been done. Plus, I learned today, the equipment, some new equipment they've just bought wasn't too cheap as well, and the county had those savings as well. So, we've saved quite a bit of money over the last several years, six years, I guess, overall. So, thank you for the report. Thank you for pointing all this out. This is good. We meet quite often. It's been a little while since I've been out to the site, and I'd like to go back, and we're working on that as well. I'd just like to see the way things are being done and the preparation they've done on this site here. Now, we do have seven, seven cells out there, and this will be the fourth one. So, from everything that we have learned and talked about, we still have over 30 years left out there. So, thank you for the report.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bill, you have anything?
Yeah, SandTech made a difference, because one thing I learned when I came onboard 12 years ago, seemed like we've always, we were always talking about solid waste. And I guess with Francis Farm, we will continue talking about solid waste. So, Cheryl, appreciate your company and what you've done for us.
Thank you for your service, and it's been a pleasure to work with you and Mr. Sorrels. We appreciate your interest and your support.
One thing we didn't mention, if we had to close a landfill, we talked, was it 30? 30 million?
Yes.
Wow.
Yes. We're having to pay $10 million right now with Francis Farm, and that was closed 20 years ago. Along those lines, Cheryl, the post-closure costs, y'all are going to handle those. Do you put so much in an account for the post-closure?
Actually, we, and Julie could probably answer this question better than I, but we actually post a bond, a separate bond for closure, post-closure assurance. And so, that bond is a guarantee to Haywood County that those funds are going to be available when we have to perform closure and post-closure. And that was something that Ms. Davis negotiated very, very hard on. She was not going to give up on that. We tried hard to kind of say, "Well, maybe we don't have to do that." But she did stand firm on that, and that is something very unique in our partnerships with local government. We don't normally do that.
Right. Well, and the reason is because of Francis Farm, our landfill there was, actually, it's been 24 years since it's closed, and we're having to put in almost $10 million for closure costs because we had, you know, underground contamination. And that's cost us, and we only used it for 20 years, and it's been 24 years, and we're still having to pay.
Right.
So, we're not having to do that with y'all. And the other thing I wanted to just comment on, it shows how this board works together. Not that I want to be partisan, but privatization of a landfill, which is what we partnered with you to do, is a Republican value, and these guys were all, it was what was best for the county, and so, we all worked together, and we were able to achieve that privatization. And that privatization is where the savings is coming from. So, a lot of the people that complain about that, seems like that I talked to, you know, that are Republicans, they need to remember that. This was a Republican value that was instituted because it was the best thing to do for the county. And privatization has worked, and it's working, and I appreciate you coming. This is a great presentation that you've made, and I'm just looking at this cell, and I guess there's a cell next to it, the one that you got up there.
The cell, the cell that we constructed, can you go back a couple cells, please?
Okay.
A couple frames. The slope that you see, that's a good picture. Go forward, there. The slope that you see coming to the bottom of the new cell, that is the existing landfill. So, that's where we're filling right now, on top of that. And so, as we move into this cell, we'll actually cover the bottom of the cell and then piggyback up onto the cell that you see where we're currently filling.
Exactly.
And that's how we gain our efficiencies.
That's exactly right, yeah. I can see that. When I was looking at that, I thought, yeah, it does make sense, because it's almost like if you had a V...
Yes.
Or a triangle, you could just plop that thing over there like that.
Right. And as the base of the landfill widens...
Right.
That's how you gain more efficiencies, by being able to piggyback up onto what's already been lined.
Right.
So, the cell looks small...
Yeah.
But in retrospect, we're going to be piggybacking up onto that existing cell.
And then, as time goes on, does it kind of like settle a little or rot down?
It will. Yeah, our density is actually getting better and better with time, and that's something that we see at all of the facilities that we manage that have a little age on them.
Yeah.
So, those are things that just contribute to the life expectancy of the landfill in a good way.
Okay. And it just helps you go a little bit higher, I guess, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your explanation.
Sure, absolutely.
It really makes sense when you're here to tell us what it is, because we get questions. It's like, I'm not a landfill engineer, so, you know...
Well, John's out there all the time, and anybody who wants a personal tour, I'm sure he'd be glad to accommodate you, right, John?
It's a little muddy out there right now.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Appreciate that. Next is Mountain Projects Transportation Update. I believe Bryant's going to open us up at first, and then, have anybody else to follow? You can call up whoever else needs to follow on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our friends at Mountain Projects are here tonight to talk about two different transportation projects. Sorry. One is to grant some flexibility on funds the county currently budgets annually. They're used for a specific purpose, and they want some flexibility because of budget cuts in other areas. And the second is a project that the county funded this fiscal year related to a new fixed route system. There's a delay in federal funds, and they want to talk about the possibility of the county going forward with the project and paying back the county when the federal funds are received. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Davis or Mr. Norris to fill in the details.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to come and speak to you this afternoon. As the county manager mentioned there, there's just a couple of items that we're requesting that the Commissioners consider, one being the $50,000 that Commissioners have historically given Mountain Projects to supplement transportation, the transportation system. And in the past, what we've been, what we've done is, we've done that through a couple of agencies, the HVO Agency and the senior services that we provide. And we would send numbers, trip counts to the finance office, and then they would in turn pay us for those, the number of trips that we would provide for those two programs. Well, over the years, we've expanded... two programs. Well, over the years, we've expanded, and we have more programs than those two programs. And it's getting more and more to the point where we just need the additional assistance overall in the system. And so what we're requesting is, is that you would give us that, just give us the $50,000 and allow us to use our discretion to be able to disseminate that, those funds, within the system that would best, would meet our needs within what we're using the funds for. So, and the other issue is that we have, that we're asking, is that if you recall, back in April, we came to you in regard to the proposed fixed route, that we were looking to implement within the county, and use urban funds, funding to develop that route and implement that route. Those funds have been very slow in being able to attain those. And so the issue is, it slowed our process down and implementation process of the route. So we're still, we're still moving forward with that. But we've, what we're requesting the Commissioners do, if you would, is consider the, if you recall, there's, let me go back to, we, just so I can clarify that what the match amount is that the county agreed to was $97,509 of a total amount of $148,686 of grant funds that we will be receiving from the federal government. And so as part of that, the match that you have budgeted for us, we would like to be able to tap into those funds to implement the route right away. And then as we, as we start getting the federal funds, we would in turn pay the county back the monies that you would be subplanning into the system, if that makes sense. So, and I have, Luba is with me, she's with the, she's with the French Broad River MPO.
That's correct.
And I can, you'll have to tell them your last name, I can't pronounce it.
That's right. Lu Bazuba with the French Butter Rempio. Good evening.
And then Patsy Davis is with us, with Mountain Projects. And if we have, if you have any questions about that request, or both those requests, we would be glad to try to answer any questions you may have.
The federal money is very, very slow. And so that's really what you're asking us. We can speed that process up from our point of view here, as far as Commissioners. Is that right, Chuck?
That's correct. And that's what we're asking, is that we will receive the grant funds, it's just that we're slowing getting the money. And it's, and we would like to implement the service as soon as we can. And there's still a lot of legwork to do in terms of working with DOT and encroachments, to get bus signage put up and all that kind of stuff, and developing where we want to put the bus signs, where we want to have the stops and all those kind of things. So there's still a lot of legwork to do. But we would like to be able to move forward with that, and so we could at least maybe have this thing in place, maybe by the spring.
What, Lu, I need to ask you a question. Of course, I'm on the MPO Board, and was involved in, when we were trying to get all this set up. But kind of what's the holdup on the federal money?
Sure, the holdup generally is the process that it takes to get the FTA grant approval, because the City of Asheville is a designated recipient for those urban transit funds. Once the MPO Board takes the action to select the project for funding, which happened, for example, back in June at the MPO Board, we still have to get the project programmed into the State Transportation Improvement Program, which takes a couple extra months waiting for the Board of Transportation. Then we have to wait for the City of Asheville staff to enter the project into the FTA grant system. Then FTA takes six months to process it. So at this point, we are still six months out on that grant approval, the second part of the grant, unfortunately. So it's just a slow process. So it's not that the money's not coming, but the process itself is a long one.
So there's no problem with it coming? I mean, it is coming, it's appropriated and ready.
No, we don't expect any problems, just a time issue.
What is that time?
It takes about six months for FTA to review the grant.
So if we front the money, go ahead and front the money, you're looking at around six months, when you'll start getting the money in, is that what?
Yes, I think that's the issue, is just being able to get the upfront money to implement the service. And then as the federal money starts coming in, then we would in turn pay the county back for what they've supplanted that, if need be. Now, you know, Mountain Projects is able to absorb some of the cost. It may, this may be an if thing. We don't know for sure, at this point, how much assistance we may need, but we're just asking the Commissioners, if we do need assistance, can you help?
And then, like I said, we've already established the routes, and we've already, of course, I rode part of that route.
I did, too.
So, and we're already having lots of interest in it. And again, the grant monies that fund some of this transportation stuff has changed. And we had to go through, and it went more toward the urban side, and of course, your match is more. But they also stipulated in this that they wanted those designated routes. So we're doing this to stay in compliance, to be able to obtain this grant money, to continue to have transportation for public transportation in the county. So that's a lot of the background that went with this, so.
Julie, do we have the $50,000 in our budget?
That's what he was talking about. We do have the $50,000 in our budget, yes.
Okay. And how do we usually disperse that?
What has been happening in the past is, on either a monthly or a quarterly basis, we'll receive a report from Mountain Projects that has a breakdown of the types of trips, and it'll show the, kind of a verification why they need the additional money. And they'll actually make a request for a piece of that $50,000. And I think the change is that they don't want to have to present that to us. They just feel like they need the money to spread over their programs, without having to come up with the reasons that are specifically related to those particular trips. Is that...
And, you know, Commissioners, we don't mind providing some kind of documentation to indicate what we're requesting the funds for. It's just, the issue is, and I'm not sure, because before I got here, I'm not sure how it all transpired, but there was, they earmarked us two programs, HVO and the Senior Center, Senior Services, to supplement their transportation with this $50,000. Well, we do that, but it's, you know, last year, we drew down half of that money.
Correct.
I think. So half of that money, we could have drawn down on to subplan or supplement services, some other services that we're providing. Because we do many other services besides HVO and the Senior Center, Transportation. So that's the issue. If we need to provide trip numbers for you, we can do that. But it would need to be overall, over the whole course of what we do with it, yeah.
And they draw down the $50,000 every year?
No, they would draw down a portion of it that's directly related to the type of trips that you had approved the money for.
Okay. So how much, so historically, you have not drawn down the $50,000?
Not... Last year, we didn't. I think before that, we...
In some years, they have.
Took most of it down.
Some years, they haven't. It just depends.
So basically, there's a need for that money to provide other transportation, but if HVO and Senior Services didn't need all that, then that, there was no way to get to that.
That's right.
And that's what they're asking. They're asking that the whole $50,000 be dedicated to transportation.
And then part of the, part of this money, obviously, is going to establish the new routes.
Well, the $50,000 is primarily on the rural side of what we do.
Okay.
It's the paratransit services that we do, the folk, provide service for persons with disabilities, and...
Talking about two different things.
Two different things, yes. Yes, the $50,000 is for the rural side. The other, the other is for the urban side, of trying to establish the route.
Okay.
That's different, two different things.
And on that urban side, we already agreed to, for the match, and to provide this transportation. And so what I'm hearing on that is that they're just waiting for the federal government to start their part of it, and they need some more of the funds to try to get it up and running, until they can get some of the federal money, and then pay us back. And then the $50,000 is totally a different pot of money that's earmarked for HVO, Senior Services.
That's correct.
That sometimes they use it all, sometimes they're not, but they have a need for that additional amount that they don't use.